I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:32.
Espíritu Santo presente.
Nareda Cantú presente.
Alex Cantú presente.
And myself, Alda Benavides, Dr. Science, I declare a quorum.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Mr. Oscar Salinas and Mr. Armin Garza are not here due to a work commitment, and Ms. Efnandez is not here due to a family commitment.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments, Dr. Benavides.
Okay, then we'll move on to item number five, and that's discussion of HVAC scope of work and air purification equipment required for air quality improvement using elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. To begin our discussion this afternoon, let me welcome Mr. Cesar González with Ethos Engineering. They have helped us put together the studying for the SR3 funding regarding air quality. Welcome, Mr. González. Board of Trustees, Mr. González is going to use a PowerPoint presentation. You do have a copy of it in your booklet.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Again, thanks for the opportunity to be here to talk about what we've been doing for the school district in the last eight weeks. My name is Cesar González, and I'm joined with me my partner, Guillermo Quintanilla. Thanks again. I'm going to start with just having an agenda and take away items. I'll try to stick to it, and if you have any questions or you want to stop when I'm talking, feel free to do so. So again, I'm Cesar, I'm with Ethos Engineering, and we were very grateful to be part of the effort that the school district is going right now at the moment to take advantage of the benefits that the SR3 funds are providing the school districts for a safe reopening. In the last eight weeks, we have visited more than 30 campuses. We have looked into the existing conditions of the air conditioning equipment. We have collected and analyzed existing drawings, and we have conceptually determined a strategy to reduce exposures to the SARS-CoV-2 following the CDC guidelines and the ASHRA Epidemic Task Force, which is the intent of the ARP SR3 funds. Along with that, we have prepared a schematic scope of work and an opinion of probable cause that is going to serve the school district to apply for the grant. A report has been provided to the facilities' maintenance staff already. You may have a copy on your package. I just decided to add the cover sheet of the report in the presentation. It was addressed to Mr. Loyah, and it is the cover sheet of the report where we talk about how the CDC guidelines are encouraging school districts to pay special attention to the functionality of the HBC system because it's associated with how we can mitigate the spread of the virus. The next couple of slides, I put pictures just to show what we have found. It's mainly equipment that is aged, equipment that is either non-operational or equipment that is not fully functional at the moment, equipment that is not accessible to be serviced or that it's unsafe to be working on. There's some spaces that require to improve the ventilation on it, and also broken equipment throughout. Sorry, I skipped a slide. So touching base on the strategy for how to improve the indoor air quality, the CDC recommendation and the ASHRA guidelines are pretty clear. Dilution and ventilation is one of the main important factors that we should pay attention to it. So for every building that is occupied, it is intended that needs to be well-ventilated so the air can be diluted and ventilation can be provided. This main, again, the strategy from CDC, it's a layer approach, first one being dilution ventilation, filtration, and air purification. This translates to making sure that equipment in the campuses are functional and operating correctly. So the funds that are available will help to replace all that equipment, will help also to play a catch-up on all the deferred maintenance, and at the end, meeting the intent of the recommendation, which is improving the indoor air quality. In the package, we broke down all the schools after we assessed all the pieces that were on the campuses, all the pieces of equipment. We had a summary, what equipment needs to be replaced, what controls for that equipment needs to be upgraded or replaced, and we have it broken down by the elementary, middle school, high school, and miscellaneous buildings. This is what helped the school to apply for the funds because TEA was requiring a pre-approval of the project and required that an explanation be given on how the funds are intended to be used and how it will meet the intent of the CDC guidelines. So the next step, it's going to be waiting on the notice of grant award. Then it will have to go through some scheduling and planning on how the campuses and the projects are wanting to be done in such a way that the district can continue with operation. And then the third one is going through a detailed engineering and design analysis, bidding, procurement process, and eventually construction administration. And that is, in a nutshell, the report of what we've been doing for the school in the last eight weeks, and I'm open for any questions or comments.
As I'm looking and just skimming really fast for the scope of work, I know that every campus has its different needs, Mr. González, but what would something look like in planning and doing the turnaround? You just mentioned that you would try not to disturb the ongoing of everyday operations, right, on that campus? Just because we have students there and staff, what would that look like? Like timeframe or would you work in the evenings?
Yes, thank you. The intent of the funds is you have up to three years so far. That's what the guidelines said, up to three years to spend these funds. What we did for you at the moment was it's a very broad picture, identifying the opportunities where the funds can be spent. And that analysis has to go on a school-by-school basis.
Correct.
Not all the schools have the same needs.
Correct.
So that needs to be discussed further on quantities of equipment, type of equipment, type of approach, and things like that.
I have a question. On a project like this, I know that what kind of systems are you all in? Like what is it that you all are recommending to install? What's the purpose of the product? And I want to know who's overseeing this project to make sure that it serves its purpose and that it's effective when it comes to children's safety on, you know, controlling or killing the air that has the COVID in there? How does it work? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Right. So this is an introduction to the intent before it becomes a project. So the proposed equipment operates is based on providing systems that can do treatment of the fresh air that goes into the classrooms, which that is associated with the requirement of ventilating the space. In addition, any equipment that is currently operating that cannot satisfy temperature, that cannot satisfy humidity, that also needs to get replaced or upgraded. So it's not only of what it can be provided new, but also what your current equipment is that if it's non-functional, if it's not working optimal, then we're proposing that equipment to be replaced. And it's mainly because of the age.
Who would oversee this project?
At this moment, I don't think your funds have been allocated to the project. But it typically goes, it goes a design project, it goes through engineering, then it goes through the bidding process, and then you have an engineer overseeing the project.
So this is basically a study of what the needs are in the district.
Like a needs assessment?
Yes. Mr. González, if we could maybe refer the board to the copy of the more extensive report on page two, where it's the cover letter that Mr. González was talking about. And if we go to page two, that is a list of the needs that have been identified for each of the schools. And like Mr. González said, every school is different, and that is shown on this on page two.
Perhaps this question is not for Mr. González, I'm not sure. I know we had some HVAC replacements, and so to see this, it makes it seem like we really didn't have replacements for old facilities. So maybe someone from the district, like I said, I don't know, Mr. González, if you would be able to. But I would like to know when we had the HVAC project that was approved previously, what was done? And how is it aligned to what we're seeing here that are the needs because of age? Maybe I'm confused as to what happened, but I would like to know more about that.
Mr. Rick Viarial does have a response to that, Dr. Benavides. There is another document in your folder titled HVAC Equipment Replacement. That is what equipment has been replaced in the district during the past two years. And so as this study was done for what other work needs to be done, this is the list that was taken into account of what work has already been done to make sure that we did not replicate. If you would like to elaborate, Mr. Viarial.
What page is that?
That is a third handout, Dr. Benavides.
It's a separate handout. It's USRM #1 HVAC Equipment Replacement.
I would have liked to have seen what year it was being replaced.
It began, okay, so to begin the question, it began in 2018.
Two years.
And this handout, yes, it began in 2018, and this handout depicts all the improvements and replacements which began since 2018 for the HVAC Equipment Replacement Project. The data in this sheet depicts 80% of units that are 12 years and older by location and quantity. So there's three pages behind the first cover page that show us by building, location, tag number, and the equipment type that was used, and along with the quantity.
So this handout illustrates the ones that were replaced at that time?
From 2018, correct, up until recently here, till we finished the projects.
So even with all these replacements, it says that 225 HVAC units, the majority were beyond 15 years.
Correct.
So even with all these replacements, we're still needing all this?
We're still needing what, yes, correct, what Mr. González is showing us today.
Yes, we're still needing all of the projects that are on page two.
Correct.
So then my next question would be if it's needed, do they have warranty since it's only like?
Okay, so these, okay, so I think by what I'm getting is everything in that sheet that you're seeing right now is and has been under warranty. What Mr. González is going to install is the remaining part of this 80%, all right? So this, which is what he has, which is what his spreadsheet has. Yes, you want to, and he's going to explain that. So what you have right now, which HVAC Equipment Replacement, is 80% of 12-years-and-older units, okay? We have newer, correct. And what Mr. González is going to propose is the remaining part of this. There's still a percentage there, and that's what he's going to present. And I think if we can go to, do you have that here on your?
No, it's on the package.
It's in your package?
It's that page two that I'm referring to on the more detailed report.
I'm sorry, Dr. Science, page two of which one?
It's the report that has the Ethos Engineering cover letter. And if you turn, that's page one, is the cover letter. If you go to page two, that is the list of the current needs.
Right, and Ms. Science, if I can elaborate more, starting page three and on, you'll see tables for each pool of the equipment that is being identified. And to the right-hand side, there's a column of the age of the equipment. So if you go to page three as an example, the first table, this Tabasco Elementary, the units that we are identifying on that table, all that units are 19 years old already.
But wasn't that one recently replaced? If we look at the page Mr. Rick Viarial gave us?
Okay, so there's, yeah, and it's good question. For Say La Jolla High School.
Let's stick with Tabasco.
Okay, Tabasco, not, the HVAC Equipment Replacement Project that began in 2018 did not replace every unit. There was a budget, and that budget only, let's say there was 10 units, and the budget only allowed, the recommendation was to replace all the units, but the budget allowed only for three units. So there's still seven units that need to be upgraded, replaced, or reconditioned.
Because on this page here, the second one you told us, it says Tabasco Elementary, and it's listed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 6, 7. So, and Tabasco is not, well, it's not one of our oldest campuses, put it that way.
Correct.
So, and then if you look over here for Tabasco, there's, we're still needing eight sections. So maybe, I don't know, I'm just confused because then the work that we did wasn't complete in any school. That's how I see it.
Yeah, there was not a complete replacement of the whole school. You are correct. And a good example, a perfect example, is Dr. Science Middle School. That was a complete removal of and replacement. And Dr. Science Middle School, you won't see here because it's already, it's been done. But to replace a whole unit is going to be a large gargantuan task. This is not doing the whole, the complete school.
So basically, what I'm understanding from Mr. Viarial was that the need was there back then, but because of financial issues, only certain HVACs were addressed per campus?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
But the needs are still there?
By need, and there's still a high need. And of course, with this, with this project, if approved, it will clean air, it will run more efficient units, and of course, provide a better oxygen level for our students and efficiency.
I think it's important to note, though, that of the units that have been replaced, that equipment is not being replicated in this scope of work. Is that correct, Mr. González? Maybe you can speak to that, and I think that might clarify.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Science. So as an example, if you go to page five of that report, the table on the top is for Memorial Middle School. So on that list of equipment, on the right-hand side, on the remarks column, there's equipment that we are identifying that it needs to be reused because that equipment was not that old, like equipment that is 2, 4, 7, 6 years old. That equipment is not part of the funding because obviously that equipment doesn't need to be replaced. And just like that example, if you go through the tables, there's more units that show up in that fashion. And if I can just elaborate more, not only for La Jolla, but for a lot of school district, the attractive part of the funds right now is that we can play catch-up on, like it was mentioned before, on projects that we had not been able to complete in the past because of financial situation, because we had a budget, but somehow we were able to get it going. Right now, this is an opportunity to, you know, it's a very unique, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because they are providing funds so that schools can catch-up on this type of projects.
I guess what's confusing is, and maybe that's just the analytical side of me, that it would be good to have seen, okay, these schools are all up to date and they're fixed, and these are the ones that we have pending. And the reason we have these pending are because they're the newer schools, but we took care of all the older schools. And now this is where we're at, and this is what we need. But it seems like it's a little bit of, a little bit here, a little bit there, and nothing is complete. That's how I'm seeing what has been done and what's proposed to be done. And yes, it's a good opportunity, and even though we have three years, our kids are going to school on the 16th of August. And so we cannot proudly say we have these many schools that are already complete, and we just need this many, and we're going to wait for the funds so that we can fix whatever else is missing. And so the way I see this whole packet is nothing is complete. There is not a school that we can say it's up to date, everything is in line, and we're okay. Every school, even the ones that were worked on, every school needs something from what I'm seeing.
Well, I think the information is here. It is just in two separate reports. And maybe you'd like to speak, Mr. González, on the list, back to page two, the list on the elementary schools. This is the list of elementary schools that needs work. So maybe speak of the schools that are not here.
Right, so the list was given to us, identified by facilities as the immediate needs of the schools. So that's where we focus on, those were the schools that we focused on getting the assessment done.
What other districts have you done assessments at?
Los Fresnos, Edinburgh, BISD, and Sharonah.
I know in our folder, we have the, and I'm not getting away from the conversation, but it goes along the lines of how pure is our air and how safe is it for our campus to be in a building. I am aware that we have, Mr. Loyah, the blaster in place, I see two sheets here. Those are already in place in every classroom, correct? And the, I don't know about this active-pure technology, but I know we have issues that we need to fix our HVAC, but we do have something out there, right, to reduce the viruses and bacterias and any type of contaminant that's in the air?
Good question, yes, ma'am. And that is also part of the presentation because one thing that Mr. González is working on are the controls, bringing in fresher air and making sure that the system is running efficiently. That's his part. The other part in HVAC is the air purification technology, which we do have some, we don't have one in every classroom right now, but we do have, every campus and building does have the air purification system. In high-traffic areas, we were left at that at the discretion of the principal. Last year, even before COVID, we already had the technology in several of the buildings. But to answer your question, there is also a plan to purchase one portable air purifier for every classroom, for every gym, for hallway area and cafeteria so that our children can breathe, and not only our kids, but our staff can breathe purified air that is virus-free. So that is also a part of the plan. But what he's doing is just putting systems in place to make sure that we get fresher air, cleaner air, and that the systems are running more efficiently through controls. And then the other part is going to be what you mentioned, and that's very good that you bring that up as well. It would be portable air purification.
Well, it's just that, you know, it alarms me based on this report, you know, and makes it seem like air is not purified, because there's so much need in each building, number one. Number two, I'm sorry, you know, that I'm not really understanding the needs assessment. Maybe I'm not really seeing it on the breakdown. I am very analytic too, in that sense. And so I want to stress to the community that are listening in that it is safe for our students to come in. And so the air that's out there in our campuses and departments, I want to make sure that our parents know that it is safe for them, you know? Because we're kind of contradicting ourselves here.
Yes, and I think maybe, Mr. Loyah, you can clarify some of that because in the past two years, we have replaced, as you said, 80% of equipment that is 12 years or more. And so maybe you can clarify and explain some of the capabilities of the current systems that we have.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. So to answer the question about HVAC, I know it's a big, we're kind of confused here. Let me try to clarify as best as I can. This sheet right here, we included it just so you could know which equipment was replaced. It is not going to be replaced anymore. It's in there, it's working, it's doing its job. What Mr. González did was came in, he did an assessment of all our campuses that we think are at that threshold of 10 years or older that need to be replaced. Our schools are safe. I monitor our schools every single day. They have the correct CFMs in every classroom, every hallway. Our schools are safe. You can walk into our campus and you can feel the fresh air. There's nothing wrong with our campuses. This is just, we're taking advantage of these SR funds that are available to us. And we're being proactive. I mean, if we can get this grant money and change out units that are at that threshold, why not? So that was our approach on that, to clarify that. On air purification, just so the board knows, we're, at every campus, we have air purifiers as we speak. If you walk into the front office right now, there's an air purifier there. These units cover 3,000 square feet per unit. On average, I have anywhere from four to eight machines per campus, depending on the square footage, depending on the attendance, or I mean, on the percentage of kids who were there during 2021 when we opened up during the pandemic. opened up, uh, during the pandemic. Uh, so our plan is also to include air purification with SR funding. Um, if you give me a second-
If you could put that on the screen, and Board of Trustees, you have that page that describes the hydroxyl blaster. So if you could speak towards that, Mr. Loyah.
Okay, so the blaster right here, this will be used in our large areas, such as auditoriums, uh, cafeterias, kitchens, libraries, uh, front offices, you name it, gyms.
Which is what we use during our vaccine clinic.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I had the, the smaller machine, but I put like 10 of them in the gym, right at the vaccine clinic. With this one, I only need one machine, because it covers 20,000 square feet. And the reason we're recommending this machine, because the ceilings are higher, it's a, it's a bigger square footage in there. When you, when we get to the classrooms, we would go down to the machines that are 3,000 square feet. They can average from 500 to 3,000 square feet per machine, uh, depending on the size of the room. If it's a smaller room, you would put the ceiling at 500 square feet, and you're good to go. If it's a, a science lab or a computer lab, you would put it to 2,000 or 3,000, just to get all, all that area covered. And at the same time, this air purification, uh, technology goes out through our vans, under the doors, and it'll go to the hallways, it'll go to anywhere in, in the vicinity, it's 3,000 square feet for the smaller ones. We also included this Active Pure technology for all our school buses, because as we know, we're gonna be picking up students now, and the chances of, of, of contracting the, the virus or the virus spreading in the buses is, is higher. So we also included a technology, it's a new technology, it's a new virus, so we need a new technology. Uh, we had a lot of people come in and, and offer us technology from 1980. We're not in 1980 anymore, we're in 2021. So we need new technology for a new virus. Uh, so this is the technology that we're thinking of, of purchasing and installing in our school buses. That way, each school bus is, is also purified. So on the way to, to school, and the way, and the way back to, to their, to their home, after school, the, the kids will, will be breathing, uh, healthy, uh, healthy and purified air in our school buses. So that's what we have. I mean, this is the assessment that we worked really hard on to, to provide to the board. Um, I'm here to answer any questions you have on any HVAC, air purification, fresh air. Um, I'll take any questions if you have anything else for me.
Mr. Go ahead. On this Active Pure, uh, technology, uh, since school's gonna be starting, what's the cost of each one, and how many do you need for each of the buses? And what would the cost be so that we can, um, make those purchases, uh, as soon as possible, so that the kids that are riding the buses? Because I don't think we can wait until we get the SR funds to do this, or maybe you already got them?
Oh, okay, uh, thank you, Dr. Benavides. So, uh, in order to, to protect our indoor spaces from mold, bacteria, viruses, including the SARS-Co2, which is COVID, we worked on a solution to cover classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, cafeterias, gymnasiums, auditoriums, locker rooms, teacher lounges, and school buses. And with this project, we're gonna cover 5 million square feet. That's our entire school district. We would need 3,000 air purifiers. That would help us to cover each and every single classroom in our school district.
I, I think I get it that you have the classrooms covered. I feel very comfortable with that. I'm just saying, for the buses, how are, you know, you said we're gonna be looking into this, and we're gonna be purchasing it?
Yes.
And I'm just concerned that school is two weeks away, and, and if, you know, how, where are we with this for the buses?
For the buses, ma'am, like I said, as soon as the SR funds get approved, we can purchase them, or we can purchase them now, and hope to, to get, uh-
And I think, and I-
-compensated.
And that, that's why I asked, how much does it cost, so that we can see if it's needed, so that we can purchase it, and then when the SR funds come in, we can get reimbursed as a district? So-
Yes, ma'am.
That was my question.
Right now, we're estimating anywhere from 3 million to 3.3 million, to cover our entire district, our school buses, and everything I just mentioned.
No, I just want the buses.
Okay, our buses, I would need to break it down, but I, I'd maybe about 400,000 to cover all our buses.
And that would be one per bus?
One per bus, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
On, on the other one, the hydroxyl blaster, that one would be, you mentioned different spaces, but is that several per campus, or how, how many of those?
For example, at a high school, we would have one at the gym, we would have one at the cafeteria, anywhere from four to five per campus. So we're looking at 150, 150 per, for the district, district-wide, of those hydroxyl blasters. 3,000 of the smaller ones for our classrooms, and 275 for our buses.
If, if this project's approved, Mr. Loyah, would we start the school year with everybody, everything installed, everything in our, in our classrooms, everything in our cafeterias, gyms, and everything? Or how long do you think it'll take till we can supply our whole district?
That would be something I would need to speak to our purchasing director, uh, because we would have to go out for, for a bid process, a procurement process, advertise, and come back and, and, and select the, the qualified bidder for that term. So I, I, I can't answer that question. But that's, that's the proper steps that we would take.
I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking, um, I, I don't know, uh, the reason I said that I feel comfortable with the classrooms, because the kids were here in this, in the spring, I mean, the last six weeks, they were here, and a lot of steps have been taken to ensure that the kids were safe.
Yes, ma'am.
It, with the situation on the buses, I'm thinking of our, our bus drivers, I, I always used to say that, how would you like to manage a classroom, you know, with your back and just a mirror? I'm just saying, kids are kids, and for them to stay seated, and for them to do. So the technology, this Active Pure technology is really needed on the buses, so that there's no spread of the virus. And so, um, personally, if it's a $400,000 purchase, I would recommend that we move quickly to get the buses equipped, because I think the district has done a good job of investing for the classrooms and the common areas and all that. I mean, that's all you've been doing this past year. But I think that our buses need, um, special attention right now, so that, we don't know how many kids are gonna be in each bus, or what the response is gonna be. But I think that that would be another step to reassure our community that all our places are safe, and that our, our children are gonna be okay if, you know, because kids are kids, they're gonna get up from the seat, and they're gonna tell them to sit maybe one or five seat, and they're gonna sit two or three. I mean, children are children. So that's, that's what I'm thinking with, with, uh-
With the buses.
With the buses.
If you give me the green light, I'll work on it first thing tomorrow morning.
I mean, I'm just one, but I'm just saying that-
Oh, I think we're on an agreement. It needs, it's neat.
Yeah. I, I just feel that that's gonna be an area of, uh, that the parents are gonna need more reassurance, because they're gonna put their kids on the bus.
Yes, ma'am.
And they wanna, I mean, some parents don't have the means to go transport their child to the school.
My, 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 my opinion is, for me, I know that the HVAC and all this, you know, sometimes we think, we say it's needed. For me, this is the quickest way to ensure our children's safety at this point. So this, for me, this would be priority right now to make sure that our classes are safe, very bidding safe. Because what I'm understanding is that this product itself is the one that, that purifies the, the air, so that, you know, kills the COVID bacteria, the, the COVID virus, so-
Yes, sir.
I, I, I'm all on board, that we can speed up the process for these machines. That way, we guarantee that their classrooms are safe, and their schools are safe, especially for, you know, our, our staff and students.
Thank you, Mr. Cantu, and Dr. Benavides, and Ms. Ochoa.
Thank you, Mr. Loyah, for being real informative. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the information and-
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you all.
I think we need to provide some direction to Dr. Science, so that in case something has to be put on the, uh, agenda for, for next week's, uh, meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that way it can, um, still be, um, included. So-
Yeah, I would, yeah, if y'all can get it done. I mean, I don't know the timeframe or, but we do need to have this.
Yes, we'll work on an item for the agenda for next week's meeting. And we're talking about the Active Pure technology.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Board of Trustees.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn this work session.
So move.
Uh, I'm, uh, okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Ochoa, second by Mr. Cantu, and this, uh, work session, this work session is adjourned, adjourned at 6:15.